Upcoming election, November the fifth election. And I want to say a few things about that mayor if I might. I think we have a, got a lot of good things going on in this community. So many wonderful things and I'm afraid as a result of some of our commission meetings and some of our, you know, some folks' opinions in Douglas and Coffee County, we may have folks who see glass half full. And I'm a commissioner who sees it, I'm sorry, they see it half empty. I'm a commissioner who sees it half full. In fact, I see it three quarters full. In fact, I think I've cut just about bringing over with good stuff. And I want to highlight a few of those tonight because going into this next election, many of us here are up for reelection and we seek this office to continue those things, to continue with that. You know, it's funny because many of us, when you're first starting out in politics, you run, if you're like me, you ran because you thought there were some things you wanted to do, you wanted to accomplish, some things that you thought you could bring to the table. This time around, I believe in the community and I believe strongly in the people, the support people of this city and the support groups that are here, the volunteer groups, the folks who are doing a great job. And I want to help support them and give them the resources, give them what they need to help them do their job. And I just want to say a few things, you know, I've worked as a city employee here and I support the department heads. Oftentimes, if I seem more complacent than some others, it's because I know what they do. I've been in the trenches with them and I know what they do and I know they're hardworking, they're dedicated ladies and gentlemen, these department heads. We, you know, we oftentimes give them the responsibility, but we kind of want to take it back or whatever. And they're listening to six or seven bosses, eight bosses or whatever, including the city manager. So I want to say I commend them on the job they do most often. And, you know, I'll typically side with them if I can and support them if I possibly can. I want to say that I served as chairman of the Land Bank Authority and I've gotten to know Georgia Henderson, I've gotten to know many, many people in Douglas and Coffee County through that and that's going to be a wonderful project. It's just been kicked off this year. They started at 2016, tried to get it going then, but we've got a great committee this time. We're going to try to help out with some blighted properties, get some things back from the tax digest and doing some really good things there. Ms. Henderson, several folks have been involved with something called First Friday. First Friday has taken off this year. We went to Thomasville, we brought that idea back in Douglas. That's a good thing. Again, we can't take all the credit for that. There's so many people within the city who've helped with that. And, you know, those are things we need to keep, keep up and running. You know, we, some of us again here ran unopposed so we didn't have the opportunity to get out and get to know the people in our wards like we might have liked to do. Now with some opposition, I look forward to that. I'm excited about that. And I want to encourage people to call me. I get just as many calls from Commissioner Moore's constituents who may think they're in my ward or somebody else's constituents for help. And I'm always glad to help anybody. I think I've done that just as much as I could throughout the past four years. I've worked very diligently, I've attended all the meetings here, the work sessions here, the training sessions, and tried to be a good steward of the taxpayers' dollars. I hope I've done that. And I think that, that we have so many good things and I hope that we can, we can learn to appreciate that, build on it and, and go forward with a good positive election. I'm looking forward to, I think this will help get the voters out for the tax allocation district vote and I think I encourage everybody to get out and make their voice heard. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Moore, if you would, let me interject. American Legion Post five fifteen, I forgot them, did not mean to overlook. That was my bad.
There's some of the good folks I'm talking about. That is my bad.
My bad.
Good evening. My name is Commander Al Walker with American Legion Post five fifteen. This evening, my cohort and I are here to talk about some of the events that we have. First of all, we'd like to invite you to our September eleventh Remembrance Ceremony. We are in collaboration with Citizens Christian Academy, their CCA's Leo Club, Coffee High School, NJROTC, and parties. And it's going to be at the CCA Gymnasium, September the eleventh, from eight thirty to nine thirty. And there is no cost and we're just asking everybody to come along and just look to see how our Coffee Countyans and Douglas relate to September eleventh because that was a major event in our history. We're also celebrating our American Legion Centennial and with the help of the Heritage Station Museum, starting on September sixteenth, from ten to noon, we have a program that's going to be there. What I failed to mention before, the display that we have with American Legion Paraphernalia is going to be in the museum up until Veterans Day, November the eleventh. So if you're not able to join us on that day, then if you get the kids and everybody else out and just go over to the museum to see. So we are inviting all of you, mayor, city commissioners, Douglas, Coffee Countyans, everybody to come and join us because this is how we show our patriotism. Now.
I'm Jerome Loving and I got to bring to you Reef Across America. We've been doing it since two thousand fourteen and this year is slow and everyone plays a part. We need everyone to play a part. There are family members, there are churches, there are businesses, there are organizations, there are banks, everyone can contribute because to continue the mission of the Reef Across America, remember, honor, teach, we need donations. Reef Across, fifteen dollars. We're talking about remembering those veterans that fought and died for the freedom we have, honor those veterans that are continuing to serve and their families because we're free because of them. But our task is teach the young, teach the children about the sacrifices made for the freedom, freedom we have. So we'll need a donation to do that. A ceremony is December the fourteenth at, we're a center way down the road, but come support us. And with our one C, everything we get coming, donations that go back to our community. So we do fundraisers, we have one going now, Raffle. You need tickets, see Facebook, call me and I'll get them to you. Thank you for the support you've given us all this time. Yes, sir.
There you go.
And our very last thing is through legislation, a law that was passed by President Trump in coordination with the National American Legion Commander. Now, any veteran serving from December seventh, nineteen forty-one up until now, currently serving, as long as they have an honorable or un. discharge can now apply to join an American Legion Post. So we're encouraging all the veterans, if they want to join us, so we can continue these efforts and stuff in Coffee County and surrounding counties, that you come and apply and then we'll go ahead and see. But as of now, you can apply to join the American Legion, which will make us more than the two, two million strong that we already have. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, that law that districts decide go to the P A, they brought that in a couple months ago, that they can go to the P A.
Okay.
You don't talk about pre-rituation tonight, so we want to emphasize the points we've made and will.
I would thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for yielding, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Moore, your comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to serve again on the commission, the twenty-seventh year. And I appreciate more for all of you running without opposition and continuing to help serve the people and spend the best tax dollars we can in the city of Douglas and as Douglas will continue to grow and prosper and be a home for folks, grand youngins and great grand youngins. And I got some of all the thank you for employees and what they do and what they contribute to the city of Douglas. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'd just like to first of all, give honor to God for this day. Just honor each and every one of you here in your respective places. It's good to see a full house tonight. First and foremost, I want to once again ask our city manager, is there an executive session scheduled for tonight? So there's not. So that brings me to this point, being that there's no executive session scheduled for tonight. And I've been asking about one for almost three months now, I think, right after June surveillance trip, I think. But anyway, are you aware that you, you can schedule executive sessions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So then, when are you planning to give us some information in executive session concerning the recent events that's gone on here in the city of Douglas with employees?
Everything's been shared except for current investigation that HCS is looking for and they should be through with that within the next week or two. But yeah, I'm assuming they'll be through.
And you think they'll be through within the next, what you said?
Couple weeks, yes, ma'am. But it's on their timetable.
Right. Okay. And you remember at the last meeting, you said to me that you were sworn to secrecy about whatever. So you didn't ever share that email with me, right?
I sent them the letter that you requested and I have not heard back from them.
No, you, you told me, you said, I can show you the email.
Did I send to them, ask them for a letter?
No, no, no.
Yes, ma'am. No, I can't.
You said you could show me the email where they were telling you, you were not to share this information.
I said I could share the email with you, that I'm going to request them, but no, that was in their office. There was no, there was no email. I mean, that was in their office.
Okay. So did you share the letter you sent to them with me?
No, ma'am.
Why not?
I, I said I could share it, you haven't asked for that. I mean, I can give you a copy of that.
No, at the last meeting, I had concerns about them telling you, you could not share information with us. So therefore, if you went ahead and sent them a letter regarding my concerns, you should have filed, forwarded me a copy of that letter that you sent.
I mean, if you're asking me for a request, I mean, I will give you a copy of that.
But it was my understanding, you said last meeting, you showed me the email that you had got from them regarding the secrecy. But anyway, so I understand that some other employees have spoken with the GBI and they have not been told that they could not, that they were to be held, their information is secret.
I couldn't speak to them, yes, ma'am. I was summoned to the office.
Okay. You went out to their office?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So you, tell me, you don't think that this information should have came to mayor and council in, in, in private with us discussing questions and answers? Not, not what they're still working on? The other information where, matter of fact, the GBI was not even involved in one of the employees' situation?
Right, I mean, everything's been shared via email. I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing that would be discussed in the executive session that wasn't aired out in, in the emails. I mean, that's.
Okay. I don't care to receive information such as that over email. I, I don't, I don't. Information like that, I want to have a sit-down so that if I have questions, I can have an opportunity to ask those questions and get answers. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. The next thing that I have is that we are all aware that this past, what is that sound? It's hurting my ears. Is it me?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, that's it? All right, thank you. This past week, all of the elected officials sitting here, we had the opportunity to qualify for the upcoming election, which is going to be the final day for the election, is November the fifth. And I heard Commissioner Mike Neal state that, you know, she was unopposed last time when she ran, so she didn't get a chance to meet the people. And I can say this because out of twenty years, I, I, I'm experienced to this and I had some training in college and this, that and the other, but, you know, you don't go out and meet people just because you have opposition. You need to make these visits to people whether you have opposition or not, whether there's an election or not. If your heart and soul is really into the people trying to be their servants, you would, you would take this, this responsibility on. Just the day before, I got ready to come to this meeting, I got a call from someone who was having problems with some police, something happened with the police. So before I could get dressed to come to the meeting, I went down to try to find out what was going on, checking on his mom and her, her children or whatever. So the chief came because Commissioner Durham had called him and he was able to come also. But I, I just want to say to the citizens of Douglas, you know, with this election coming up and a lot of you have been here to see what has gone on in the past and we have had some real troubled times, and there's no need to pretend like we have not, there's no need to pretend that everything has been hunky-dory because it has not. But I said to you all in the past that whomever you choose to elect, you be very careful about it because these are the people that's going to make the decisions for you, whether they're going to be nonchalant and don't really care about you or whatever. But I can truly say, and, and I thank God I am unopposed, I, ever since I won, I've been unopposed. So that says to me that my constituents feel like that I'm doing a fairly well job. So I, I thank you all, District Three, for allowing me to represent you, to serve you. And, and whenever you call me, whenever I can, I come and see about you. So again, I, I thank you. But this is a serious task here. Sitting up here is a serious task and I don't take it lightly because we, we have people livelihoods in our hands. When folks have high ridiculous utility bills, seven, eight, nine hundred dollar bills, we could act like we don't care and, and tell them pay it the best way they can, or we can try to come up with a plan to help them out, like I proposed years ago, because when I first came on this council, people were complaining about these high utility bills. So we came up, I served on the utility committee with Ms. Wannella and several other employees and we came up with the payment plan. Now I'm hearing the payment plan is not being quite as effective as we had hoped for it to be. So if it's not, we're going to have to try to come up with something else. Because we, when you sit in this seat, you've got to have the, first of all, the love of God in your heart and second of all, love for, for humankind. So if you don't, I put a post on Facebook the other day, if you want to get up here and this seat and keep your mouth shut and not represent the people, make things better for people, then you need to stay home. And I'm so serious about that. I am very, very serious about that because I am passionate about people and people being treated fairly. Everybody should be treated fairly and with respect. And some people, I think, get up here just to get the amount of money that, that you get per month or, or, or just to go on the trips, I don't know. But if your heart is not in it, to the citizens of Douglas, Georgia, be careful who you mark that box by their name when you go to vote. And what you do, you look at their past, see how they've served the people and represented the people. And if they have not done that, please don't vote for them. Because I said it on Facebook the other week, this is the worst administration I have ever served on or served with. The worst. And I put that on everything. I put it on everything. I, I tell you, and it's sad. It's sad because I can say this, to have a majority African-American commission and to have the strife, the hatred, the lies, it's ridiculous. It's really ridiculous. As I stated in the work session earlier, there was something sent out this morning that was a blatant lie and it said, a blatant lie about me. And God knows, I don't know, like I told Commissioner Moore during the break, I don't know why some of my fellow commissioners seem to have a problem with me. I guess it's because I speak my piece, I don't bite my tongue and, and I tell them how I feel. And that's what I want them to do with me. When we talk, tell me what you feel, what you think or whatever. I can respect a person for telling me how they truly feel as opposed to somebody lying to me in my face and saying something different behind my back. And lastly, Mr. Preston, you're sitting over there smiling and you should be because you keep up the most mess in the city of Douglas that I have ever seen. The most mess. You, you keep this community divided based on racial lines.
Sure do.
It's time out for your mess and the citizens of Douglas need to see you for who you really are. And I'm addressing you here and now because you won't give me an opportunity to talk with you face to face, you won't consult with me about anything, but you go to your little, wherever you go, your house or wherever, and then you make your comments. And all those comments you made on the, over the past weekend after qualification on Friday were so nasty, saying about Tony Park is our guy, he, he, the white folks can put Tony Park in, all that kind of mess. And you said, you spoke about myself, Commissioner Durham, trying to put immunity between white folks and my, between myself and him, trying to already put salt in the game against my nephew. You didn't bother to mention that Rockley Johnson, who is running in, against Commissioner Durham, you didn't bother to mention that that's the mayor's nephew, what you want to say about who my nephew is that's running for mayor, Terrence Colly. Well, to the people of Douglas, let me say to you, you judge Terrence Colly on his own word.
That's right.
He's a Colly, that's right. He is my nephew, that's right. And one thing people, the citizens of Douglas can admit about the Collys, we're going to tell you the truth, whether you like it or not. We're not going to lie to you and try to sugarcoat it and if you don't like that, then that's on you. But you know, when we say something to you, you can count, take that to the bank because we're not going to sit and lie to try to make you, okay, yeah, no, we don't play those kind of games. We wouldn't rear it up that way and gladly so. So, Mr. Preston and, and Mayor Park and whomever else playing your games, play them. But it's on the citizens of Douglas to do the right thing because like I said in that post I made, y'all, don't come running to me when you vote for the wrong person. Don't come running to me if you don't select the right person who's going to be fair, who's going to do right regardless of the color of their skin, it's on y'all. It's on y'all because this community should be fair and way better than what we are. I think that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pierce.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start out there saying that school time, it, it is in full force and we're asking the citizens of Douglas, if you would, please, Mayor, please, sir, to start out ten fifteen, twenty minutes early according where you got to go because we do not want an incident that happened over in Fisher, Georgia, that the school bus was transporting some football players back home and there was a car pulled out in front of a school bus and there were some of the kids got hurt on that school bus. Even the driver along with one of the kids, I think, crashed into the windshield because I was over in Chitha with my dad and I want y'all to keep him in your prayers because he's going through a little something, you know? And while I was over there, they brought a lot of kids in and I'm asking everybody from Coffee County, with school being in full force, please take out extra time to wherever you're going, to take all the extra time to give your time to get to where you need to get to. Next thing I have is that election time is here. We have candidates seeking for various seats. We ask the citizens to go out and vote for the best candidate. That is your right. Main thing is go out and vote. Please, Mayor, and please, sir. I'd like to say congratulations to the Trojans on their first win on Friday night. I think they have a home game this coming Friday night. Me, along with Jordan and maybe my wife, Barbara G., will be there to support them. Also, my last say is keep the Johnson family in your prayers. Pastor Johnson, along with Mother Johnson from Pine Street.
Lighthouse.
Lighthouse, lighthouse. Good young lady, church-going lady. She was well-bound, but she did not let that stop her from going to church every Sunday. She passed away on today, you know, everything. So keep the Johnson family in your prayers, you know? That's all I got there.
Commissioner Durrell?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to say, first off, I would like to commend all the citizens of Ward Two and tell them thank you for letting me sit in this seat because if it wasn't other citizens that elected me, I would not be here to be the voice of them on today. And I tell them thank you, I tell them thank you, I tell them thank you. From the start when we qualified, it was in my spirit that I would run a clean campaign because running a clean campaign and with God in my life, I don't have to fight an unnecessary battle that I have to go against. I fight my battle through prayer and I fight my battle through relationship. And that, saying that, with Ward Two, I built a relationship with all constituents of Ward Two. I went door to door on a golf cart, just had a stroke, well, I was, I didn't have a stroke then, but I had a stroke after I was elected. But I went door to door, getting black, Hispanic, white, it didn't matter to me. I don't see color, but I built a relationship with those citizens. And I can sit here today to say that I'm honest, I'm dependable and I'm, and I'm passionate. But most of all, I'm determined to reborn the community involved in it. And I want the citizens to access to themselves, do you know your status? Do you know your status as a citizen? I want to see our citizens more involved in local government, more involved in our school board, more involved in our city. Because if it wasn't for you, we wasn't, we would not be sitting in this seat. And no one should take that lightly because if it wasn't for them and God, if, if nothing would be possible. But some things, you just have to put in God's hands and pray about it. Just like the minister said, the actual fervent prayer of the righteous, of David's much. But the scripture also says, "If my people that are called by my name would humble themselves and pray, turn from and seek my, turn from your wicked ways and seek my face, he say, there I will heal the land." If we're going to see anything change, we got to know our status and stand up as citizens and get involved. Because if you don't, if you're not going to get involved, there's no need to have a voice. And we are the voices that represent you. My name is Kentaywin Carter Durham and I am the commissioner of Ward Two and I solicit your vote on November the sixth, uh, November the fifth. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Gallow?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Unlike everybody else, I appreciate the opportunity that I have to be seated on our commission and to work with this entire commission for the betterment of our city and our community. Look forward to serving the next four years and helping to make our city better and stronger and to serve our citizens. There's my, as I think about what I would like to do ahead, I've got four main areas I want to address. I want to exercise good stewardship over the city of Douglas funds and help oversee our budget. I want to work to encourage economic growth in Douglas and Coffee County. I want to continue to support the improvement of city facilities, especially for Parks and Recreation, to enhance the quality of life for our citizens and our employees. And last but not least, I want to ensure that we have, that we adequately fund our public safety agencies to make sure our citizens are kept safe and secure. Whatever else it'll take to just grow our community. We have our challenges. Um, we have our challenges, but I agree with Commissioner McNeil. We've been able to accomplish a lot in these last four years, and I look forward to what we can do over the next four years as we try to strive to work together. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, my comments are as follows. Uh, first of all, uh, the city manager texted me, we do have a utility committee meeting. So at the conclusion, we'll have a recess and let everyone depart, and we'll stay in the chamber and take care of the utilities. Okay? My comments are as follows. Um, first of all, mighty Coffee County Trojans did me some justice. I was over there in Brunswick. The game was well in hand. Those are the type of games that I like. No stress in my life. I don't like last minute wins. I want to be up by forty-five points by the end of the first quarter. I don't want no stress in my life. Because when you lose them close ones, that hundred mile trip seems like five hundred. So keep going, Trojans. Uh, as Mr. Taylor said, that school is in. Uh, let's please be mindful of leaving a little early. Make sure that we get, uh, children in the bed, uh, so that they're well rested. Uh, get a good meal in them so they can go there to learn. And, uh, I heard Ms. Murray say this one time, and I see her over there, said, "The more you learn, the more you earn." The more you learn, the more you earn. And it is statistically proven that the more education that you have, the more you're going to earn during this life. So look, I always tell the students, remember, the teacher already has their degree and already has a job. They're trying to give you some knowledge to help you along your way. So always be mindful of our teachers, our educators, uh, the janitors, uh, the lunchroom workers, the bus drivers. Uh, my next thing is, you know, the Tykes Allocation District is coming up, and that is gonna give the citizens the opportunity on November the fifth to go vote, to see if we're gonna put a little skin in the game. Uh, to see if we can have Hobby Lobby, Starbucks, Chick-fil-A, Cookout, and Marshalls. That's the initial group. So give us the opportunity to try to improve the quality of life. Maybe we can get some of the surrounding counties to come here and pick up a few things. Also, I want you to be mindful is that we're still talking to a couple industries. Uh, try to keep the streets as clean as you can, uh, clean up around your house. Because guess what? If we do land a major industry, those employers are gonna be looking for housing in all areas of our community. Uh, so we want to make sure that we have a great presentation when they ride through. You know, we do the jump drop-off twice a month. Please take advantage of that. My next thing is, you know, this is my second time sitting in this seat. This is my second time sitting in this seat. And you know, Mr. Roper had a profound impact on me. Before I had the first meeting as the mayor, I think I was forty years old, I had never sat in any elected position in my life. And over there across the hallway, I was talking to Mr. Roper, and I said, "Mr. Roper," and notice I called him Mr. Roper, I don't even call him Commissioner Roper because he ascended above that role. Everybody calls him Mr. Roper. And I was trying to tell him I had all these grandiose ideas. He said, "Boy, if you sit down and shut up, I can teach you stuff." You know what? I set my butt on the corner of my desk and I listened to John Lee Roper guide me. When I wanted to go left, nah, we did that back in nineteen eighty-four, son. That ain't gonna work. I'm gonna tell you why it ain't gonna work. Well, what about this, Mr. Roper? And I say that because at the age of forty, I felt as though our city had some issues. And that I wanted to come down here and I wanted to correct those issues. But you know what? Think we did a lot of good things. Think we did a lot of good things my first administration. One of, one of the things I'm always mindful of, whenever I see parks and recreation, I see Douglas, Coffee County parks and recreation. I see Douglas, Coffee County parks and recreation. And I always keep that in uppermost part of my mind. What can we do together? What can we do together? We have built a second to none parks and recreation program throughout this state. But you know something else? It didn't look good. It didn't look good. The optics of that entire exchange didn't look good. And you know what? When I came back this time, I remember the night I was laying on my bed, in my, in master bedroom, I was laying across my bed, and I was waiting and watching the election returns, hoping, hoping and praying that the United States of America was gonna elect President Obama. And when they did, man, you talking about somebody, I was on cloud nine. And throughout his administration, I watched him get punched, I watched him get talked about, I watched him get lied upon, crucified. He used to make me so mad. Won't you fight back? They just punching you. But he knew that what he was doing as the president was gonna be forever. His legacy was, the election the second time, I was still in the master bedroom talking to my wife. I said, "You know what? I wish President Obama would have been president before I took office the first time." He would show me how to act. When you sit in a position of authority, there's a responsibility that you have. There's a responsibility. Going back to Mr. Roper, there are six commissioners up here and there's one mayor. Mr. Roper say, "Stay out of my ward. I represent my ward. If I need you, I'll come get you." I said, "What, Mr. Roper?" He said, "Hold on. If I need you, I'll come get you. If my ward is messed up, it's my fault, not yours." So I tried to stay in my role as the mayor. Try not to get down in the weeds of the commissioners, nor do I try to get in the way of the city manager and his staff. I always remember what Jerome told me the first time. You have a legal umbrella of protection. When you go outside of your role, I can't protect you. The first time I sat in this seat, I got sued a lot. First, I got sued personally a lot. Sitting in here in depositions after deposition. And Jerome said, "Hey," he was in his official capacity. Soon as they deemed I was in my official capacity, they dropped the lawsuit. Why do I tell you that? As the mayor of the city of Douglas, I have a responsibility. I am the face of this community. I will always walk with my head high. I will always put the city of Douglas first. Always. Always. Why? Because I represent eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty-six citizens. All of them, whether they can vote or not. I represent them all. That's what it means to be the mayor of the city of Douglas. I check my ego and my biases at that door. And I make the best decisions that I can for our community. Because guess what? Facebook, everybody is watching. Everybody. On the Economic Development Authority says that a lot of industries don't even contact the state anymore. They go on Facebook, they go on live feeds, they go social media. They can find out everything about the city of Douglas that they want to find out. So guess what? We are talking to a couple industries that could change, that could change the way things are here in Douglas. I'm not gonna let this mouth be the reason that they don't come. When I sit on the Economic Development Board, I say, "Look, I understand those problems. But guess what? We have to up these wages. Up these wages so somebody can buy a house instead of renting a house." Just tell me, up these wages so somebody can buy a house instead of renting a house? Well, Mayor Park, you doing all right. Whoa, 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 whoa. Just because God been good to me don't mean I forgot. I'm still from D five, L one. Because less you forget, less you forget. So as the mayor of the city of Douglas, I'm gonna walk high. Because this city has been good to my family, and I am trying to repay a debt. A debt that I cannot repay. Because guess what? Mr. Roper gave a lot for me to sit my butt in this seat. I am going to do everything that I can to honor everybody that went before me with honor and dis- as much respect as I can give. And if I have to bite my tongue, hold my peace for the greater good, that's what I'm gonna do. Because as the mayor of Douglas, and this is, this is my last comment, the President of the United States is an idea. It's a concept. Here is a concept of free government, democracy. A concept that we should hold dear and dear to our hearts. And I do. So with that being said, all the citizens of Douglas and Coffee County, we are grateful for your support. Go out and exercise your right to vote. Go out there. We're gonna do everything that we can to continue to make the city of Douglas great. At this time, I have no more comments. We're gonna take a recess, and then we'll have the utilities, okay? Thank y'all.